Whatever the reason you need to borrow money, West Tennessee Bank can custom tailor a loan to meet your specific needs with a payment that will fit your budget. We have as many different types of loans as we have customers. West Tennessee Bank, a division of Decatur County Bank. We think you'll like us. Equal Housing Lender, Member FDIC.
I'd like to start off by thanking everyone for coming and being at our county commission tonight. I would like to implement an idea that I think that will make our meetings proceed in a more orderly fashion and be sure everyone can hear and know what's happening. If you would like to speak, ask a question, or make a motion, you must raise your hand and be recognized to speak. In making a motion, I would like you to do that with a microphone and stating your name afterward. A second can be done with raising your hand and stating your name. Then the motion will be restated and asked for discussion. If you have discussion, raise your hand and be recognized. And then, when you're recognized, a microphone will be given to you for everyone to hear. And after discussion, there will be a vote. I think this will make our meetings go better. Now I would like to recognize Tim Crowe. He has a letter he would like to read.
Good evening, everyone. This letter was sent to me on July 19, 2019. On behalf of the Board of Directors, Employees, and members of Southern Prep Academy, we'd like to thank you and your fellow commissioners for your generous offer, $10,000 to aid the efforts that serve the children who are at the Southern Prep Academy. We greatly appreciate the commissioners who support our efforts to ensure that affordable childcare is available in Chester County. However, we understand that several commissioners have stated their lack of support for this offer. Considering the recent controversy associated with assisting the school, we felt it is the best interest to the Southern Prep Academy and the county commissioners for us to decline the proposed donation that the Budget Committee requested in fiscal year 20 budget. The last thing Southern Prep Academy would want is to have the past controversies shed a negative light on any future nonprofit organizations that may choose to approach the county commission seeking assistance. Southern Prep Academy continues to be committed to providing high-quality childcare to the children and working parents in Chester County who are in need of our services. Again, we are extremely appreciative of our commissioners who have continued their support and efforts of the Southern Prep Academy. We regret if any of them have been placed in a negative light due to their support, respectively to yours and the Southern Prep Academy Board of Directors. They are effectively pulling their request for the money, so that should be in their donations. Thank you all.
In lieu of the letter, we would like to approve the amended contributions. They're the same as before, except with Southern Prep removing their request.
Do you need a motion to remove that?
That's what I was gonna do. I would make the motion to do the charitable contributions as presented in the last meeting minus the Southern Prep's $10,000.
I'll say it.
We have a motion and a second to remove the Southern Prep contributions. And we would like a vote for the amended contributions. Do we want to have a roll call? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have the quarterly reports and amendments. That's correct. Going back, I would like to approve the corrected amendments that was mailed out.
Move to approve.
We have a move to approve from Johnny Garner.
I second.
Second by Ann Lowen. I mean, I'm sorry.
The made notes I was there were not the ones I saw in your office on June 28th. What, are you correct? You said they corrected made notes?
Yes. All the corrected ones was mailed out, correct?
You got the correct copy, right?
Ah, I'm not sure.
You got the correct copy.
I'm confused about what's right and what's wrong.
Well, they should have been one.
How many did you mail out?
One.
Yeah, the one I saw in the office, the nice one.
That's right. It wasn't mailed out. That was just brought to me. And it was wrong, and he amended it and sent out the correct.
So what he's making reference to, so that everybody will know, was a second on the charitable contributions. I had it as out, and it was not out. It was actually a handwritten.
This was because we couldn't hear correctly, and that's the reason we want to have the microphones and know what people saying, and when you speak, we'd like your name.
So it was brought to my attention. It was corrected, and it was mailed out.
I'm also referencing a motion I made and the second that the election was taken on. And you told me it's because you couldn't hear, so I hope these improvements make it nice and correct those issues.
That's correct. That's the reason I'm doing this.
It's my intention to make a second action as we take on the election.
Well...
You got a motion, second on the floor, where you speak.
Yes, I do now.
I'm asking questions about...
We made the notes. You need to vote on this before you discuss that.
That's correct. Then we have...
I guess he does now.
You're the ones that's done right, so we're trying to do it right.
Well, I'm asking questions. Do you interrupt?
Okay. Your question is because you made a motion that was out of order in the last commission meeting and got a second, that it wasn't recognized, correct?
Did you call me out of order?
Sir?
Did you call me out of order?
I didn't at that time because Ms. Judy Bernard was on the floor.
And I was asking her questions.
Well, this is, hopefully we'll correct all this, and the one that is wanting to speak to have the microphone all except for a second. And that way, there should not be no confusion. We'll know what's heard and being said. Is that all right? Yes. Okay. We have a... Is there any more discussion about that? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendment goes as correct. Now, we're on to the quarterly reports and amendments. We're starting with the school first.
Good evening. I learned from station that you've all received your quarterly report.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Joe. Asking for any questions that you may have in any part.
I'll make a motion to approve. I made a motion to second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Tim Crowe and a second from Johnny Garner. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
Page the commission.
Mr. Gilchrist, I would like to say, on a fourth note, we like the school bash that was held at Hillview Manor complex last week. It was hosted by several churches. Y'all had a very good turnout from the school system, it's good with the boys. I think it played well on the community and your big commission. Even you were there, so you should be proud.
It was a wonderful event, and there is another one scheduled for this coming Saturday at Middle School. So we open and encourage anybody to come out and be a part of it. Again, those events at Hillview, they're gonna be continued. So it's, these are our children, regardless of where they live, where their background is. So I appreciate your attendance too, because that means a lot to the community. When our community-involved people are interested in our kids' lives.
I know they like hot dogs. We cook them all.
Thanks, Big Daddy.
I apologize for our county commissioners. I apologize.
Plenty of heat to go around too that day, wasn't it?
We have a motion and a second to approve of the report. Is there any amendments? Thank you. Next, we're on to the highway departments.
Did everybody get a report? Any questions? I'll try to answer.
Yes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second by Ms. Carolyn Higgins. Any discussion on the report? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next, we have the trustee report.
Good evening. Hope everybody got the, got a copy. Any questions, comments?
John?
I like the way that I got mine. It was hand delivered.
We have a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
We have a second.
I'll check it.
A motion by Tim Crowe and a second by Mr. Russell Clayton. Any discussion on the trustee report? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. May I have one second for a personal matter?
Yes, sir.
My apologies to the court and to the audience for my outburst. That was uncalled for, and I sincerely apologize.
Next, we have the county general. Can everybody hear good?
Yeah. Didn't everyone receive a copy of the report for the county general in solid waste of corn? Yes. Okay. Is there any questions I may answer for you?
I will approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And we have a second. Can you get any microphone?
She asked for questions. Uh, how much mayor we making on recycles? Where does that show up on the budget coming back in? Or are we selling any recycled stuff, or where does that fit in?
Uh, that's in the revenue side of the county general, I mean of the solid waste. Mr. Bernard, if the president can break that for you? But, I'm sorry, we're doing county general right now. Is that correct?
Yes, this is the county general. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion about the county general? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now on to the solid waste. Now...
Now, I have the revenue with me now. If you'd like to look at that, it's in 44145. I'll be glad to get it for you.
That's not on the sheet.
No, so that's the trustee report. And you have the expenditures for the year, but I do have the revenue with me. If you'd like to read that.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second. Motion to approve, Commissioner Tim Crowe. And we have a second. Any discussion on the solid waste? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the library report.
You do not have the library report, and I apologize. It is not the fault of the mayor's office. I was off today, and I could not get to any. One thing we need to do today is to reappoint the library board members. This is, and we have so many being reappointed, because the secretary of state sort of changed the rules about library board members. But I'm gonna pass out to you the circulation report. And this is the regional library circulation report. And this is the regional library's fourth quarter circulation report. And I want you to pay attention to Chester County. Our little tiny library checked out over 10,000 books this past quarter. So for anybody that thinks that books are always going to be on the internet, that's kind of wrong. And that's just books. That's not everything else that went... We did have a really good attendance with our children's programs this summer. We had, oh, over, I think, seven or eight hundred people off together during the month. We had a program every Tuesday and Wednesday in middle school book club on Thursday. So that's lots and lots of boys and girls and parents coming in.
So we need a report from the board?
Please.
The library board to be reappointed. The members are... To be approved for reappointment are Melinda Carroll, Dr. Larry Blumberg, Dr. Sarah Knoll, Jeanne Smith, Beverly Morton, Donna Butler, and Mike Alexander. We need a motion. We have a motion, Mr. Johnny Garner, and a second by Mr. Jerry Love. Any discussion about the reappointment of the library board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I have one more thing. Just, and I will be very brave, maybe a minute, just for you all to think about the future you've got between now and the next time you do a budget, to think about this. But when I took this job in 1996, I was considered as a lucrative part-time position. My children were still at school. My mother made a lot of my time, and it worked really well for me. But the library director is also a department head, and I've seen our 2020 budget, and I know I'm not, or I have never been, an elected official. But the elected officials who are also department heads make about three times more than the library director does. And I know secretaries of state who have been to some of our big meetings have made that comment that that library people are not usually paid very much. And when you have someone who is going to school and trying to get their masters, as my replacement is going to do, and she's a very good, nice person, I would like to see her pay a little bit more. I am not asking for myself at all. But I think that's something you all need to think about over the course of this year. Because if you want to keep somebody that's dependable and looks at everything that the county needs as far as literary needs, you do need to try to pay them a little bit more than what I have been making. And I am very grateful for my salary, but I will have to say there are clerks and secretaries that make more money than I do. And that's not to say they don't work hard, because I've been in and out of all these county offices. I know how hard everybody works. And I do appreciate everything you do, but you need to also consider the library next year when you're doing the budget, because that person needs to be making a little bit more than is going on right now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sit down. This is your last meeting, was it? I think we ought to give her a round of applause.
Yes, and thank you for the great job, man. Next, we have the physical strength and efficient governmental physical confirmation letter, three-star program requirements. Is this the letter we just need to be approved, or need to be...
So can the commission get a copy of the letter? Okay, so what that talk about is a three-star program, and it's a congressional program this state, and it talks about state management policy, manual cash, local cash, and also compromise documented, and control requirements. Going through the budget process requires us to have a national forecast. State management policy required by state law, and we all require national control. We didn't put it in there.
Did everyone hear that?
We do have all that in place, but I figured out we have to bend the policy.
So... Mr. Mike Alexander makes a motion to approve the physical letter. Mr. Tim Crowe has a second. Is there any discussion about this? Y'all have one? If not, all approved, say yes.
Yes.
Any approved, say no. Any disapproved, I'm sorry. Now we go to other business, which we have already approved the library board members. So we need, I would like to... Begging of Jerry Love, Commissioner Love.
I've got a question about, did we not give this construction company $10,400,000 to build this building?
You mean you're referring back to the...
All the animals that failed.
Not that I'm aware of. It's still the same as it was.
I understood some lady that was gonna have to give them $10,400,000 or something about the...
The difference between the firewall, that was the requirements that was done, they said it was still covered and it would still be for the same price.
That's good. All want to move. Thank you.
You have in front of you... Previously, there was a planning commission, but this will be our new planning commission, and we're to meet the third Monday of each month if this is approved. We're gonna meet in the conference room of the Public Safety Building, and all is invited to come, because this is something we're starting, and it's gonna be new. And we want as much participation where everyone learns what it's for and all. But this is the ones that will be on the commission. Mr. Jackie Butler, Mr. Barry Smith, Tim Crowe, Melinda Johnston, Brian Whitehead, Rick Seaton, Patricia Jones, James Cawthon, and Jeff Harris. They will be the ones that'll be starting on. And Beverly Morton also is also depend advisor, because property assessors will be used a lot. I would like a motion for the regional planning commission.
I make a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second.
To approve the regional planning commission, I'm Andrea Holland.
Thank you. We have a motion by Ms. Andrea Holland for a regional planning commission. We have a second by Mr. Johnny Garner. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, on the other business, Sheriff Lyerwick would like to speak.
I would just like to say for a quick minute, we wanted to announce that the Henderson Police Department, just in case this problem, Henderson Police Department has entered into an agreement to start a backup narcotics division. We've had that for years and years, and there was an administrative hire that didn't agree with it and stopped. So myself, and Chief Griffin, and Chief Davidson, and Assistant Chief Roman, and the mayor, that we would be starting it back up. And actually, it's nothing. We did have two of the city officers, a pain-in-the-ear officer and a narcotics investigator. Their insurance covers the Mountain County. It's nothing, but just help for us and help benefit what the... We just, we like to help what's wanted.
And if I might say, just that Chief Davidson did announce at the last city board meeting what he said, that our city officers that will be participating in this, their work is comp, and their interest follows them just as on Main Street Hendersons and with Main Street Infolite. It just goes back to something that we've done for years. We're just trying to get it back to what we did when we tried to high ground all of the city in Kansas.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I appreciate everybody helping me. I believe it will help us in the long run if we learn, when we speak, to get a line for us. That way, I know up here in our last meeting, I did not hear things plain, and I might not have been the only one. But I think it helps, and especially for the people out in the audience. If y'all can help, we want y'all to know what's going on also. So I'd like to thank you, and now for your... I think what, I think I saw it out first, if you don't mind.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I think it'd be helpful if the minutes from the committee, other committee meetings were read in this full session of the commission, where everybody could hear what went on and know what was happening.
Okay. Yes, that sounds like a good idea. Okay. We'll start bringing the minutes from the committee meetings we have and read them. That'd be good. Yes.
I would like to address Mr. McKinnon's request about the solid waste recycling material, if it's okay. The amount budgeted for this last fiscal year was $220,000 to take in from recycling, and the amount actually collected was $236,300. So we're about $16,300 ahead even with the prices being down.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Russell Clayton. And I know in the past, we have helped some people go to the vials for the Robo-ot. We've done other things in the community. We've got two teams going to the World Series, two girls' teams are leaving this week. Last year, I took it on my shoulders, and I went around and I took up money. And when they got back, we had a appreciation. We had a pizza at the school. Unfortunately, we had a sad weekend. We had a pizza at the school. Unfortunately, we had a sad weekend, but we did get some enjoyment out of it. We marched these kids out on the football field, and we had a tragedy that we had to deal with that weekend with one of our teachers. I think the county should look forward to building something to recognize these kids as they come back, and Mr. Kildare says they're part of our community, and we should support it.
I would like to ask, does anyone have a motion, what we could do?
Talk about like leaving them or something like that, or something more?
Well, I think that would be, if we could, uh, do something similar as we did last year, or add or change to it. But those kids, when they come back, they fought real hard, and both teams, uh, our senior girls finished second, and they got beat by Louisiana. They won it in two games, and it was very, very close. The other team finished third, fourth, and they're the same teams going back again this year. And you should, you should have seen the look on those kids' eyes whenever we brought them out on the field in front of that crowd, and them being recognized in front of it. They really loved it. And I had each mayor to come out and put a medallion on, as they were on the field. I don't know how many of you seen it, but I thought it was a, was a good problem.
Yes, I, I agree.
Russ, Lieutenant General?
Yes, sir.
Russ, are you asking for money in mind?
Yeah.
Uh, I had, well, last year, I spent in the vicinity of $100,000, and I bet on pizza, got the medallions made and what have you, and they were three teams. They were the boys' team. This year, we only have two teams.
For the $1,000, basically?
Uh, I think it'd be twenty.
Lieutenant General, I think most of we give the $1,000. I'll say it. Raise your hand.
We have a motion, giving them $1,000, and a second by Jerry Lowen. Is there any more discussion, anything you want to be asked about it? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Is there any other business that would like to be brought up before we charge the district? We'll go on to charge the district.
Yes, sir. We have. Yes, sir. Okay, here we go. All right, we have several. First one is Brooklyn Cornell, Ms. Kim Gott, Kisha Lynn Harris, Sonny Hughes, Roy Dean Manley, and Frankie See. So there's six of them.
We have a motion by Mr. Tim Crowe and a second by Mr. Mike Alexander. All, any discussion? All approve, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, I'd like, yes, sir.
Lieutenant General?
Yes. We have a motion to the general.
All second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?